Here.
Okay, there's some of these dignitaries and now she has Director of Public Works, Robert Cappy, from the last Friday or previous Friday?
Last Friday.
Has passed the state test and is now a certified arborist with the State of Rhode Island.
I know it.
Anyway, number four, in people of the agenda order, I have one thing we need to move and it's number nine, F, under new business. I'm gonna move that until after we go into executive session, we might or might not have that there.
After executive session?
After. After, what do you say? Uh, so who? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, except if, uh, we have, what, two different things to announce, so does anybody want to remove any reports?
Yeah, I'm, oh, Belshi.
Diane?
Belshi, what?
What? It's okay. Of course. If you're doing... You're forty? Um, yes, yeah. Four, Tesla, did you just put Tesla?
No.
No, okay, Tesla, please. Everybody on that?
Number seven, reports.
Uh, communications, anybody need any communication?
Number twenty, please, Dan.
Twenty-one.
Thousand and twenty, value of twenty-one? Sixty? Go ahead.
I was gonna say two twelve and sixteen.
Two twelve and sixteen? Mine was sixteen and twenty, so those are covered right now. Okay. Uh, bill sheet, get four of them, I need to set.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
The June twentieth minutes, please, Dan, I just got it from the President.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as of today. So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first one up would be approval of the bill sheet.
I'll move to approve, President.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then approval of the minutes, council special meeting, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, motion to approve those.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I stand for the role.
Guys, make a quick stand and greet the head of your back, Count.
Thank you. Better to be seen than to be heard.
Okay, next up, number six, vacancies and appointments, personnel board.
No.
Conservation commissions? Uh, any resignations?
No.
Uh, appointments?
No, no. Down there would know.
Okay. Do you file here in the ward, alternate member to serve three-year term, beginning date of appointment? Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee members, members, to serve four-year term, beginning date of appointment, what is it, two vacancies?
No.
Members?
I think it's two.
Okay, nothing?
No.
Wood Pocketuck Wildwood Seamic River Stewardship Council, alternate member?
No.
Library Board of Trustees, member, to serve three-year term, beginning date of appointment?
No.
Yep.
Board of Canvases, alternate member, to serve unexpired term, ending May third, two thousand twenty-seven?
No.
Okay. Public Works Superintendent. You're up, Rob. We got one.
Whoa, what's that?
I got one. I'm handing my recommendation letter. I don't know if you guys received that. Out of the, uh, the applicants who, um, put in resumes, I put my recommendation on William Brown. Mainly, uh, like I said in my letter here, he had a, with his progressive dedication to the department, um, it's why I thought of him first. Uh, he started out as a snow sub for us and he went to being a public works worker, dove in headfirst, he's the leader, uh, but the guy's work ethic is excellent. Um, he wants to be here, just like the rest of our guys, I'm proud to say, and, um, I think he'd be a huge asset to the department and, uh, so I stand with that, William Brown.
Okay, any questions from the council?
I'd like to, I'd like to move that William Brown be appointed as superintendent.
Second.
Then I'd like to speak to him.
Right ahead.
Uh, when I saw a, uh, application, and once I got out of the week, you know, confining the streams that I've been in, I called this gentleman and said, what, 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 tell me what's, uh, on the plate, and after a conversation with Rob, I was really pleased to see what your recommendations are going to be based on our conversation. So wish you the best and make it work.
Any other questions or suggestions from the council? You made a motion, right?
She seconded it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, before we move on, we now have a vacancy.
Is the guy right here?
It is.
Thank you. You double as the bouncer? Before we move on, we now have a vacancy in the Public Works Department. I'd like to advertise for a public works worker with the applications to be due by July twenty-fifth, so Rob has time to interview and be appointed at the next meeting. That's a motion, so.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
That's a motion, yeah. Exactly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Next up, planning board members, serve five-year term, beginning date of appointment. We had one letter last month, it was Gina Turner, asking to be reappointed to the planning board, we have not received any other correspondence, so.
Um, I'll make a motion to appoint, reappoint Gina Turner.
Second. Any discussions?
I think it's clearly of a final on the planning board, I think it's, it's a good mix. We appreciate you all, Dan.
Any other comments from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, next up is, does only board review, alternate member to serve five-year term, beginning date of appointment, we have not received anything yet?
No, we haven't. Just...
Well, I'm moving the votes.
Yeah, we had all the votes, we're just not getting it. We're about a thousand calories, so.
But I spoke to Lynn today and she was waiting for tonight, maybe now she's got it.
Because, um, the woman over there doesn't want to be reappointed, so I, we made a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Reynolds Chair of Trust Committee members, serve three-year term, beginning date of appointment. I guess they have a vacancy there?
Yeah, so we'll leave five.
Uh, you've already got that voted, don't you? Okay. Any expiring terms coming up?
I think we have enough already, so no more.
Next up is number seven, public hearings, A, proposed amendment, Exeter Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-two, Environment, Article four, Special Flood Hazard Areas, Section twenty-two dash fifty-two, Apple, ability, section twenty-two dash fifty-two, A, Special Flood Hazard Areas. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, Jim, this was basically just changing the wording on one sentence, I can believe.
Yeah, um, the, the, um, state agency that oversees this, um, hazard, uh, regulations, uh, indicated that we needed to update our ordinances and Bill was taking care of that building as well, and he was under the impression that everything was completely fine, and when the state, uh, officer reviewed it, she found that there was one mistake, one thing that needs to be done, and it's very minor, uh, it's just, uh, the panels that are, uh, that are mapped that indicate these various flood hazard areas, that one of them that we had in our ordinance was now, uh, basically out of date, and the new one is shown underlined, and so the area that's crossed out is the old one being crossed out, it won't be in the ordinance, the new one will be there, you know, in the state of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and although this seems kind of, um, innocent and a very small change, if this wasn't done, apparently it could have hurt that, uh, ramifications because you could lose certain, you know, people that are in these areas could lose their ability to get, uh, flood, uh, flood insurers and that, so it was actually a good catch, uh, and it needs to be done today or else the time runs out, like next month, so, um, we caught this just in the past, and this is really something that needs to be done. It's the history of it.
Any questions from the council? We have one individual signed up to talk, Asa Davis.
I just saw her.
You signed up for the next one.
This is the public hearing.
No, 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 no. Tell me about the public hearing.
Yeah. Still three little minute time, right? So the flood district changes, it says, it's good to see the town complying with state law, it's a big difference from what happened with the town garage site and the D E M violations. I also saw the item on the zoning record, so I look forward to hearing what that's about, maybe we'll start following state and local laws there, too. It's Monday morning quarterbacking, but just think, if we were actually following the zoning code, including this one regarding the town garage back when all this stuff was getting built. Two point six point one, zoning affects every structure and use, no structure shall be constructed, uh, or commenced and continued within the town unless in conformity with the regulations herein. Going back to the floodplain ordinance, guess what property has significant land in the floodplain overlay district? That's right, the town garage on South County Trail. Guess which property has four structures which are located in special flood hazard areas? That's right, the town garage site. It looks like all the offending structures were built since the floodplain overlay district was set up. Per that ordinance, all proposed construction or other development within a special flood hazard area shall require a permit. This didn't happen for any of these buildings or for the special use. The application for a flood hazard development per, permit shall be subject to the Exeter Building Inspector and shall include the address or map indicating the location of the construction, a site plan showing the location of existing and proposed structures, sewage disposal facilities, water supplies, areas to be cut and filled, and dimensions of the lot, a statement of the intended use, the elevations per, uh, in relation to the mean sea level of below floor, base flood elevation data for all structures, the elevation to which the structures will be floodproof, the description of the extent to what water course alterations, and then prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit evidence that all necessary permits and approvals have been received from all government agencies from which approval is required by federal or state law. None of this happened for any of those buildings. Use regulations, the special flood hazard areas are established as a floodplain overlay district. All development in the district, including structural and non-structural activities, whether permitted by right or by special permit, must be in compliance with the following, the Rhode Island State Building Code, Coastal Resources Management Program, Freshwater Wetlands Act, and minimum standards for I S D S systems. Any priv, uh, variances from the provisions and requirements of the above referenced state regulations may only be granted in accordance with the required variance procedures of these state regulations. I don't know about the building code, but I do know that the C R M C, wetlands, and I S D S did not happen. So within A O areas, non-residential structures shall be elevated or floodproofed above the highest adjacent grade to at least the highest depth number on the maps. If there isn't one, they have to be elevated or floodproofed to at least two feet above the highest adjacent grade. Didn't happen. Detached accessory structures, such as garages and sheds, do not have to meet the elevation or floodproofing as the following standards are met. There's a list of about twelve, the very first one says, the structure is no more than a hundred square feet in size and has a value less than a thousand dollars. We fail that one, the very first one. So last but not least, violations, the failure of a structure or other development to fully, to be fully compliant with the community's floodplain management ordinance. A structure or other development without required permits, lowest floor elevation documentation, floodproofing certificates, or required floodway encroachment calculations is presumed to be in violation until such time as that documentation is provided. There's plenty of blame to go around for this, letting Steve violate all those D E M regulations, but just think, if only Hal Morgan did his job. We've already spent well into the six figures on this D E M legal and engineering fees. We wouldn't be giving up the truck pull area, we wouldn't be giving up the baseball field parking lot, and we might actually be able to use that in the building for its constructive pur, purpose. Zoning code number eleven, freshwater wetlands. No freshwater wetlands shall be excavated, drained, or filled nor any extraneous materials be placed in these wetlands without prior approval of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and the Exeter Town Council in accordance with the provisions of said chapter. This means that that burn we built in the wetlands with the refrigerator and dead animals and oil cans needed Town Council approval. Since nineteen seventy, this has been illegal by town and state law, and you allow it. These are floodplain zoning violations, every single one, there's no discretion for the zoning inspector to decide not to enforce. This site and the zoning violations already came before the zoning board of review, so we already know they don't think I have standing to bring a zoning complaint. So the question is enforcement. This is now up to you. What are you going to do to enforce the town's prior and brand-new floodplain ordinance on the town garage property? Because if you don't enforce it, that's selective enforcement, it's unconstitutional, and it's been going on for decades. Enforce the ordinances so they're at least worth more than the paper that they're written on. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? How about? Motion to close the public hearing? Is there something to say?
Uh, maybe I should.
Okay. Uh, motion to close the public hearing?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to approve the proposed amendment.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is number eight, public conference. And the first person is Ray Allen.
Good evening. Uh, forgive me for not standing, I had a knee issue, but, uh, I wanted to check on the council tonight. I have served on Town Council in the past for ten years, and I've served as president for, for those terms, eight years. And, uh, about six months ago, I was looking over some advertisements for appointments to be made involving the Conservation Commission, and I thought it strange that they were practically defaulted, they hadn't met in so long. And when they first went in, it was very important to the planning board, they would check on them and they would give advisory opinions acting as a planning board. So I did, I, I applied, and I found out that on my sixth, a member of the council, or two, I'm not sure, had felt that, had said that I'm historically involved in buying some real steam in the town of Exeter, and it would be appropriate for me to serve on that. And I was also told that the grid developer was used with my name, so I just wanted to clear the, clear the air over there. First of all, when I was South County President, we, I helped create the Conservation Commission, we put it in the act. It was my goal to put Scott Malone on it. In thirty-two years, I purchased four pieces of property in Exeter, one next to my home from the carousel in the streets, which I think I should have a control over that, I'd like to see what happens next in my home. I purchased a, a mobile home on my street, repaired it with my nephew, and it didn't go to the market, I turned it over to my nephew because he wanted to keep it. I purchased, uh, with a, a partner, my uncle's property on Glen, Glen Rock Road, uh, six acres, and they were, and in this case, we did develop it, technically. There were three homes on it, a, a derelict trailer, a condemned home, and a small house, and people were living there, and we went to the town and we brought it from three residences to two residents. So in my opinion, I think we did, we went the opposite way, no, we didn't consider it all. And the fourth piece that I bought in thirty-two years, is a house lot I got a run in.
You gotta finish up, Rick, it's pretty bad.
Well, all right. Uh, again, I didn't, I sold it to someone else who was a house lot, but that's not much in there, too long, but in my, in my tenure, I helped establish the rescue department and the closure of the Exeter dump, the new one, uh, a water protection zone along Quays Row, which by the way was abandoned after I left office. So as far as the developer, I'd like to say that, maybe I have developed things in Exeter, but I think I have developed things along an Exeter make it safer and more ecologically, economically friendly town. And as far as a reference, as to me, my name as, at a public meeting, I hope it was misinterpreted, but regardless, I feel they were unfounded and unfair, and therefore I say, follow.
All right, Rick, I gotta stop here for the three minute, so, good job.
Thank you.
Next up is Asa Davis.
So in housekeeping news, uh, first, my middle initial is S, it's not a D, I don't think there are nine outstanding lawsuits involving me anymore. At the least, you can take two off since the Attorney General's Office ruled against Rusak and the town in both of the open records cases, P R twenty-three dash ten and P R twenty-three dash nineteen. We do think the calls for investigation should be put back on because besides the D E M one, you have high six figures in taxpayer funds which were spent improperly, and you do have a fiduciary responsibility for managing those funds. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine is new business, uh, Exeter Public Library Director awarding a bid, Gutters and Doubts about, that you came?
Yeah, I was, I was going, Bobby, fuck with me about that? Um, I, I didn't get a chance to interact with you.
Well, as you can see, there was only one better for, of course, two projects on the agenda. So in order, of the agenda, we want to talk about the, um, the Gutters and Doubts about, they were mostly part of the roof project, but weren't included in the bid. Uh, we did receive a, a bid with the first netted roof, which was a little less than double what was bid on by the company, so, and we recommend that the bid be awarded to the sole source construction. Do we only see all the bids? I don't see anything but sole source.
That's all, that's all the bid we had.
You said the other company bid, and...
The ones that did the roof in the first bid, but we didn't include the Doubts about in the, in that bid spec, so we couldn't award the bid as part of the roof contract. So it's all covered with Champlain funds, the remaining balance.
So with regard to, let's say, item two, uh, I'm sorry, not the minutes, I'm looking, I'll begin. Item nine, D, is that refinishing of the portico?
Running, yeah.
Yeah, A. Oh, the gutters, the others. Well, I, I'll move that we award, uh, that job to, um, sole source.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up is Exeter Public Library Director awarding a bid, Refinishing Portico Ceiling and fascia.
Once again, it wasn't included in the painting of the windows, and that's the, um, when you walk in the front underneath, nobody really noticed it, there's a, a piece up there that we still want to get re-bonished and redone, so it was pretty good shape. So, um, once again, that bid was much less than what we were quoted for by the company that painted the windows, so we recommend that that be awarded to Sole Source.
You have a little company.
Well, well, I mean, then, then we can go to item nine, D, refinishing the portico ceiling and fascia, and I move that we award that award to Sole Source.
Second. Any discussion?
Under discussion, I, I wish both of these could indicate for the record that these are financed through Champlain funds, just so the record indicates that these are not funded from cash paid dollars. He might have already done that, but it's good if someone looks back to the record to see that the funding came from elsewhere, which I think is the end's credit for continually paying Jen and Ken.
Ken.
Yes, I know, each, yeah, who's Ken, uh, but, uh, you know, it's good to have these initiatives to help pay for the work that needs to be done. So thank you, Ken, thank you, T N.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item C, Exeter Public Library Director awarding bid privacy pod.
Well, you, you have an email from you that was, um, sent out late today, it was just mostly on the classification of the sole source provider. The company that, well, no one bid on this, this pod, right? And it was because the, um, there was only one company that makes the, the pod for the specific size we want, the amount of money we have, and so, um, they're the ones that initially gave the quote, and made them feel like they, that they had confusion, that they had to bid on, so, but, um, I think we, you'll see in here that there's some reasons why we consider it a sole source, and it applies to the town ordinance and the state law, and also, um, there's a settlement coming from, um, the federal government into the Officer Library Information Services, which is now a grant given to the town, um, so their cap is anything under the ten thousand dollars, I mean, if they're over ten thousand, I squat the bid, so we, we comply with that. We just bid, nobody bid on it, we have the sole source provider, they're the only ones that provide this specific unit, and, uh, we just have to get the approval from the purchase agent, that, so according to our, that's a sole source.
But you don't need a vote of the council on that?
Yes.
Because we have to, because it's still a bidding process. So you do need a vote?
Yes, you do.
First, first Lynn has to basically confirm, confirm, uh, give her, uh, agreement with Ken's, uh, email in which he listed the reasons why he believes it was sole source, he sent that to Lynn, so if Lynn agrees, um, then that would be placed into the record as the sole source, uh, and then the town council would need to, then have...
Continue to next month?
No, no, you could do it tonight, you could do it tonight, as long as Lynn states that she's in agreement with that, that it's a sole source.
She's under no pressure, correct?
No, no, she's, she's...
I know, I know, we read it already. I only want to say that this is fascinating to me, I, in my absence, I, I can't imagine what issues the people will discuss, just, uh, privacy...
We saved it all for, for you.
Privacy pod, a privacy pod, is that?
Yeah, it's something.
Nine dollars a night.
Yeah, I've never heard of it before.
That's a cheap one.
Bedded it or what?
Well, if you want to have a meeting or a call, call, you go to the library and you have a nice private area, you know?
Are they going to have it, like, you can reserve it?
Yes, but you're seeing them more often in the airport now.
Yes.
Some people have them in their workplaces.
I don't understand what's privacy that someone would need, but I guess this needs...
But if you're going, like, to the, because you don't have an office and you use the library computers or Wi-Fi or whatever, because that's a nice place to work, you might, you need to make a phone call, not just work on your laptop or something, and that, instead of going outside and then there's traffic and kids and whatever, you can have, like, your, a little, it's like a phone booth, basically.
But bigger?
Yes, bigger.
How many people do they need? Just out of curiosity.
Instead of having to go in the men's room or the ladies' room?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
This is the smallest one, this is the one person, but other libraries have, like, for multiple people, you can have a little meetings and all that.
But other libraries have, like, for multiple people, you can have a little meetings and more than, you know, two or three people. One person, 10 grand? Not even.
And this is great.
But it's very money, once again.
I'm not, I'm not, I just don't, I just don't understand.
Well, and obviously, it's, this is a practice that's in place elsewhere. I mean, I know that Ken isn't just creating these ideas out of the set. He's, he's, he's looking at what other communities are doing.
Yes.
That's exactly what I said, break a pause.
Okay, I didn't mean to prolong, it's just fascinating.
Motion to award the bid, well, Sole Source provider for a privacy pod.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, Treasury's Office awarding a bid audit services.
So on May 25th, we opened up the bids for the audit services and there's only one bid, Wadavick and Company, the same one that we've been using. And the bid was for $17,110 per year for the next three years. And so everything was sent up to the Auditor General and they approved his selection of Wadavick and Company.
I need a motion to approve, a motion, what was the name of the company?
Wadavick, Wadavick and Company.
Wadavick.
Wadavick.
You want to make a motion?
Yes, I will be happy to make a motion. I want to make a motion to award the audit services bid to Wadavick and Company.
Second.
Any discussions?
Yeah, I just have to tell you a story. I mean, you know the story of Parmelee and Correa? You remember those names? In the first night, it was in rehab. Who's the gentleman on the other side of the curtain, Mr. Parmelee? I said, wait, that name is familiar. Well, we've done a lot of audits. Oh, we just met, I think you did the audits for Exor. Just had to mention that. It's a small world, it's only an island story.
It's a three-year.
I got a motion, add a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item F is contingency after the decade session. Item G, Exeter Clerk's Office. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a good one. Awarding a bid Town Hall Architectural Services. We've only received one bid and I'm going to say hold off on awarding this until we get more information from these attorneys for the one piece of property up here. Do you want to leave that as your own business label or how you want to put it? Okay, continue that one.
Ken, I just think that for anyone sitting here, they ought to know that the purpose was to try to assess the need that we have. And so with a lot of effort, I think on your part and others, we created this RFP. The one bid we got was $46,000. So I think what you're suggesting is we need a little bit more information and we might be able to make an informed decision without giving someone else $46,000. I think that's what, and I don't mean to speak for you, but I just think people need to know. We're not taking this process lightly of a town hall issue. I just had, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's good.
Well, I just kind of, you know, we just.
Okay, item F, we're going to continue from after the decade session. Item G, Exeter Clerk's Office building, second floor, soundproofing.
Yeah, so last, so during one of the meetings, we had someone mention that there's a lot of echoing coming from the tax collector's office and it goes up the stairs. It's disturbing their focus and it's hard to concentrate at times when there's people in there. So, I mean, that's a, that's a simple thing to fix, I thought. And after talking with, with Rob and Bill, we have some ideas about reusing some of the Plexi glass that was upstairs at the top of the stairs on the left of it, that low wall. And then maybe purchasing some, some sound panels for the lower area going up the stairs. And I know he found some online, he sends us some pictures and some, the company name. And the prices seem pretty reasonable to at least take the, bare minimum, take the edge off the echo and the sound so these people can focus on it and their work a little better.
Yeah, Plexi, that's a Plexi glass.
Yeah, there were some sheets in front of the people, there was one in front of Dixie's desk, I think, a big one at one point. That would be the key.
And when I saw this and I know the issue up there, I thought, oh, if we're going to do anything in this building, like, why spend money in this building even if it is a little bit of money? And I don't know if this would fly at all. Switch the canvassers and the, and Kim, the tax collector, so they come to this window over here. See?
It sounds innocent to me.
That's my reason.
Probably not.
That's why I was like that way. But I thought, oh, that's a little bit bigger in there too, but nope. Okay, I got it, now it's clear.
Don't touch that.
No.
You got a better chance of putting it in the basement.
Yes.
Did you get any additional information since?
No, I think you covered it, Mike.
Okay, so what do we need to do to move forward to get those few sound panels and reuse that Plexi glass?
All I need is for the council to put me in that direction and that's the direction we'll go.
Okay, I think we should do that.
I would like to know how much, like, what's a ballpark figure? Is it going to be like $500? Is it going to be $5,000?
It's in the hundreds.
Yeah.
Obviously, Public Works would do the labor and so there's nothing there, but.
But there is there.
Sure, I mean, but.
The Plexi glass, it's around somewhere. You think you can make it like some, some sort of a frame or something that will hold it in place, maybe? Well, just a thought, I mean, if it doesn't work.
Yeah, it's worth a try.
It's worth a try.
If it's going to be hundreds and not thousands, in my opinion.
Rob, bidding, the Plexi glass will be under $1,000 and the?
Yeah, well, I wish they could reuse of what we already have. I don't think we need those shields that we made for, you know, those, we could use all that stuff, I mean, just reuse it.
Yeah, why not?
They're big shields.
The map was, did you price them or less than?
Unfortunately, I don't have that, the price list with me, but they're, they're pretty.
I think I looked, this is a few hundred each.
Yeah, yeah.
I never corrected.
They're different sizes, so they vary, but you're right.
So we don't need to do anything as a council, we can just ask broadly to proceed to get that done? Because it's a bit expensive, yes? So we ask you if you could please put that on your schedule, okay?
My schedule, thank you.
How's it being paid for?
Do you need an email? How's it being paid? Did you need an email to remind you or?
No.
I think she answered the question. On your part, on your budget, do you have the old green? I just hit.
I'm in my budget.
Where's budget?
You're in budget.
What?
I'm in my budget.
Everybody needs a friend, Mike, Maria, right?
It's been boring without you.
No. They work so well together, the GLs, no, your budget, no. Doesn't have to be. That's why we have contingency.
We should trigger this out of next Monday's council meeting.
We've got a few plans, so. We've got to do a real quick special meeting next Monday night, so.
So we all set on that?
Yeah.
All right, we'll leave that on, keep working on it.
Leave it on yet? I thought we're all set, we all set? Do we need to wait?
Take it off.
Make, we need a motion to take that off the new business, the soundproofing?
Take it off?
Take it off, because he's going to be in. Item nine D, please.
Put her second.
Before you vote, the only, the only reason I'd say not is that if the next time we meet, Rob can give us more of a, here's what we're going to spend thing, that's all.
Or it's over $1,000.
Well, thanks.
Well, they can't afford if it isn't.
Mike, the reason I asked about that is because if it's over $1,000, we have to get reforming bids, we have to get all sorts of.
So we can't spend over $1,000?
Like, are you confident that it's under $1,000?
No, the reason being is because I didn't measure that wall to the ceiling. And our plastic, our Plexi that I was thinking of using, I had to make sure it's going to reach that or be, you know, not useless, but not as good. My only comment to that is with the window being on the base of that stairwell and the plastic being here, it's, the noise shoots up.
That's what I was going to ask you.
I feel like it's spinning wheels, not really accomplishing much, just because of the position of the, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I totally understand.
In my opinion, $50 spent there would be $50 wasted, but I will do the work. Just saying, that's my opinion.
I agree with you.
Well, if I worked, if you worked up there, you might want an attempt.
I'll, like I said, you instructed me to do it.
Can I ask a question?
Go right ahead, Pat.
If we're taking this out of her budget and it wasn't allocated and figured in, this last year, financial town meeting, people were complaining about how much money was in that budget.
The building, yeah, yeah.
I think that's fair.
Believe me, I understand you.
I find at a town meeting this last year, people complaining about Town Clerk's budget, making public meeting budget. And now, she didn't allocate this in her budget, whether it be a hundred, like.
So they complained and we took it out of the budget, is that what you're saying?
No, they complained because there was too much money there or it was so, they wanted to work.
So they complained last year, so what do you, what does that have to do?
This is previous one, a month ago.
Yeah, a month ago. And this wasn't allocated to be in there, so now is more money going to be in her budget when she's already set her budget? So to me, it's not, it's not fair for something that wasn't allocated, take it on contingency or something.
Well, that's what I also said, if you read.
Right, that's what I heard you.
And the only reason, again, I'm not trying to monkey hurt you at the worst, but I just thought maybe if we wait just to see if we get something. Of course, you're initially poor, sort of. What if you spend $5,000? Do you think it would work?
It's such a tiny task, I don't understand.
I'm just kidding.
Well, because it's not going to complete the task, because the, you're.
We're not going to complete the task because it's, this, there's a number here.
It's a building, yeah.
We're just trying to take the edge off.
It's a good thing.
But I feel like it's going to create more of a sound tunnel. You put that Plexi glass? What about Plexi glass? I just heard.
I don't know, Bill mentioned that he thought it would be helpful, and it sounded, I, I, I'm just, if you guys think it's a bad idea, I'll just withdraw it.
I'm just confused at the design aspect of what is going on, I guess.
No, I just, I don't think it's a bad idea, I just think maybe we should.
A little bit more.
Kick it in a little further?
Just one more?
One more.
We could put up what we have and try.
We can put it on next week.
Yeah. Rob just said they could put up what they have and see if it works and then.
Without the soundboards, I don't know that it's going to do a hell of a lot of curtailing of sound. I don't know, I think that that's the main thing. I'm not a sound expert by any means.
But from what I've seen, they were relatively inexpensive.
Yeah, that was the whole reason why I got excited about it.
You had it on an angle and it hit this?
Oh, you mean place them so that?
They're on an angle and the volume won't go into it.
So they got on the ceiling, but they're this, like this.
It's supposed to hit.
But I just don't want to hit like that on that one.
Oh, I know, the stairs are not conducive, not conducive to that, but that's how the sound thinks.
Is there room for a door? No room for a door?
I think a door would be dangerous.
It's already tied up there. You can't open the door into the stairs either, because that's probably, it gets cold.
You would need a landing up there, and there's not enough room up there as it is for filing cabinets. So you'd need, not, you could put a door, but you need to put space for a landing.
They would be off.
Limited space.
Maria? I mean, just to address, not to be prolonging the issue, but just because the building maintenance, so anything that really has to do with the building, whether it's, does go in her budget usually, and that's part of her budget. So a lot of things that come up, which is why, you know, it is, her budget is what it is. It could also come out of planning board, they do have a budget. If it's only helping planning zoning, it could be split, so. But in any event, it's all coming out of the general fund anyway. So at the bottom, at the end of the day, the bottom line is, so I'm not picking on Lynn or wanting to spend her money too much, but.
Going to say, it doesn't seem like that.
It's a good idea.
So we could take the 50-50 zoning and planning?
I mean, when it comes to that, yeah, we could, we could.
Sure. So can we check it next, you want to put it on the special?
Yeah, we're going to do a quick meeting.
Well, you have a little information in a week? Well, let's put it on his special.
You have two things, though.
Well, in the meantime, what have we been doing about it?
Doing what you've been doing forever.
What is it working on? Well, what, what are we actually, who's doing work? You want to look into it, you got his prices for Monday, is that?
Right, and I'm also going to measure the sheets that we have and see how they're going to be.
What's one we need to complete?
Is the meeting on Monday?
No, he's just making, he just created it, Mike.
Why created it?
Is there a meeting next Monday?
We're going to do a real quick, before we get to other creative issues, I'll explain it.
It's not yet, Mike.
Okay, next up, we good? We can move on?
Yes.
Planning and zoning decisions slash public access, you put that up.
Oh, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
I only did because it's been brought to my attention that sometimes zoning permits, special use, things like that, are not always, cannot always be readily found. I mean, I don't know that, I haven't personally, or, but I've understood that it can happen. So I just don't know if the process, if there can be a way to scan in permits when they're issued, so there's a record. I don't do that.
And they all should be, in my opinion, I know the planning board has talked about having all their, like, when somebody submits plans for, I know I talked to Dixie about this before, like, you could look at all the building permits online, you can look at, and during COVID, they, all the plans and everything that was on the agenda was online, so everybody, there was a digital record, basically. And I think, like, you go into a lot of other towns and all their planning and zoning decisions, you can very easily access them and Exeter should have.
These are online.
What's online?
Oh, she's talking about the app. Yeah, but it says decisions, and they're online when they record, when they record them. They record all their zoning and planning decisions and that goes online automatically.
Those are the land.
In land evidence. The decisions that it says here are recorded in land evidence and are available online.
Okay, but applications are not.
Yeah.
Zoning certificates.
You're talking applications, so that's different.
Well, wait, don't need certificates? Well, I just mean when somebody's issued a certificate, like, a special use or something, are those?
Right, you're talking certificates, which is different from what's on the agenda.
Oh, well, then, then that's, what did I say, planning and?
Zoning decisions, and they're all recorded and they are all on the computer.
Okay, I consider it fine.
Yeah, we can put the, oh, we need to put the whole record on.
Yeah, no, I, it's fine, a decision, I mean, if somebody issues a paper, that's their decision and they've issued it. But if I've used the wrong terminology.
They were recorded on the, if you use my name and then it says Exeter Planning Board Decision or Exeter Zone Board Decision, you can find them all online. If you go back too far, they're not online, but.
Well, as I said, I don't know, it was, it was paid to my attention.
And I think also, like, when we get ARPA requests and stuff like that, it will.
Might facilitate maybe.
Easier, instead of searching through boxes.
And these companies will come and scan everything and put it in a repository, you know, that James would have to set up. There are companies doing it.
Yeah.
Got to make a budget for it.
But you mean past?
Or you're going to do all the past stuff all?
Right, but what I mean is when Pat says that stuff's already available, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
Planning and zoning, after they listen to an application, make their decision.
Right.
It's written, it's recorded in land evidence.
Right.
Those are available.
And I said other things than what?
And I said other things than what you wrote.
Right.
Yeah. I muddied the water.
She was talking about application zoning, planning, applications, and zoning certificates by the zoning inspector. Those are not digital.
Right.
Okay.
And that's what she saw, so you guys
Well, that's because We were talking and I said, oh, I have to
Everything should be
That's fine, I said, oh, I have to talk to them, so
Now, that, uh, it's something that needs more research and cost. Because, you know, good DDMs only allowed to get so much each year, or ideal, they get a little bit of money each year, and they slowly, this stuff
Well, and that's what the planning board, when I'm sitting these meetings, they talk about if we can do it slowly, build it into their budget to make ten more.
But if anybody's working for copies of those things, you know, call the records request, ten business days, they got it.
You wanna leave that?
There is that, right now.
Yeah.
So do you wanna take this off and probably reword?
Well, you can reword the item, uh, make it, make it what we were actually talking about.
Uh, let's get on to the next one, Cal, because you put this on.
Harry, it's unfinished business and rewording?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, new legisla, new legisla, new legislation changes the Robot Act, Comprehensive Planning Act, and zoning enabling act, and land development subdivision act.
Yeah, I did, because I just think the public needs to know, the record needs to show, we got a lot to do. That's all, and I just wanna make sure that the public realizes, and this was our, if you, if you don't mind, here's our communication from Bill, unless you already addressed it at a meeting I didn't attend, but this was dated, made So unless this was addressed at the, um, June meeting, June
I have no request.
Oh, thank you, because I couldn't be there on June 18th. I tried, but the doctor said, no, you need to be hospitalized. Okay, so, so here, let me just summarize regarding the comp plan and land development. Changes in the comp plan act require approved comp plans, and if the comp plan is outdated, cannot be used as a reason for denial of subdivision and land division and zoning applications. And, you know, this has been a longstanding argument, and it hasn't only been Exeter that's done this, because other communities are way behind. But now, their new legislation says, can't do that. I, I forgot how many years it speaks about, there's a little bit of a, of a, of a lag time, not much. Changes in subdivision, in that subdivision bill include greater number of lots under a minor category from five to nine, and other new definitions and processes. And keep in mind, everyone, we have till January twenty-fourth to make all the changes that we made. January twenty-fourth.
January first, two thousand twenty-four.
About six months or something. All right, and then, land development rates include new definitions and many in-house review of land development projects and development plan reviews. Integrates development plan review definition process into the subdivision land development legislation formerly zoning enabled. Then this changes in the public hearing notice requirements. And this was a piece, you know, the dinosaur always to bring the newspaper, because I still that, and here was, here was, um, Thursday, last Thursday's paper. And one of the things that I was happy to read, though you can't believe everything you read, as we know, it says here, "The increase in minimum units is different for the few municipalities and areas not served by sewer systems." I didn't hear that before, but I highlighted it. I don't even know if it's true, but it said it in the paper, so I'm sharing it with you. But I'm just, I'm, I'm only I'm only, you know, there, there are whole other, you know, this, these are highlights, similar to what Bill put together. But, but when, after a long discussion with him back at the end of May, I just said, can you give us name us some bullets so that we can speak for the record to work that needs to be done? And not, not be, it has to be generated, and we can't generate it, it's gotta, it's gotta come from the planning or some, or Bill or someone. But I'm just saying that it's, to me, significant and serious. It came from Smithville, where there's lots of people that wanna develop lots of braces. See the development, we're gonna say anymore. Did you wanna, if you remember what
Ken, I said, Dan had called earlier and told him that, um, Steve, Cyc pole and Bill had been talking about possibly doing some kind of a memorandum, that, that everyone could be circulating generally about what needs to be done or changes. So that's, I think that's what works right now, it'll be something that I like what you're
And I, and I didn't mean to not to acknowledge that you and I have talked about this as well, as you said. Steve is jumping in on top of it.
I like being concerned about what the legislation is.
It's important to know here tonight that our legal counsel, uh, staff is, is already aware and concerned in this stuff to do, that's all.
Okay.
Is, is that gonna stay, is it unfinished?
We could take it off if they have a report for next month, then we can always add something again.
Do you motion?
I, hmm, well, see, Dan and I would have a difference of opinion on this. I think because this is some work that's gonna be coming down our pipe, I just feel that it ought to stay.
Okay, no problem.
But I think you know what I'm saying here, that things may come up month after month, and it's here, and we don't have to worry that you know, and not put it on without letting it stay. We can ignore it, Dan, I, I promise I won't speak, I promise I won't speak.
I got my stat, Cal.
I know, you can, next, next month, you can go through
That's just that one subject, Cal.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, unfinished business, A, uh, use of American Rescue Plan Act funds town hall issues, birth new town hall, first purchase of seven forty ten Rock Road, this is for the year, we're going back and forth trying to get more information. Jim's talked to some attorneys and, have you heard anything?
My phone, the owner, I talked to the owner already and asked for all the information that Jim
Spoke with the owner's attorney today, and he's gonna have more communications with his client, let's get back to the comments.
Moving.
So we can leave that on there for a little bit, listen if they got any questions.
Should we rename that agenda item?
What's that?
Should we rename that agenda item?
I'm open to ideas.
Well, I think the point, what I made, the point you're making is that it says town hall addition.
And new town hall.
Well, I know, but that new town hall is, if we, if, if we're not, yeah.
You can leave it the way it is.
No, but, well, that's up to you guys.
I would take addition off for potential purchase.
Yeah, potential positive purchase of seven forty-two ten Rock Road, but hey, we need a vote on that. Okay. Uh, B, July two thousand twenty-two, communication number sixteen, Governor Keever Island Capital Project One, multi-purpose community facility matching drill. Nothing new, Maria?
No.
Okay. C, Split Rock Road Park. Number one, request of electrical inspector Randy McGovern to obtain engineer's report that required violation to be corrected promptly. You received an email, was it today?
You said one today or two days?
There is the sixth, we have one.
Yeah, July sixth.
From July fifth.
There's one today that said something online.
The one that was all in order, yeah.
It seems in essence that they're doing some work, but there was an implication that the other work suggested
The polls have been delivered after six months.
If they haven't been delivered, if they, we didn't get the, they've been delivered, I was questioning, have they even been ordered?
So they've been delivered and they said it's gonna be done, did he say August?
The end of August.
And he was coming back in at August, if I remember correctly.
The end of August, September, yeah.
And when did this, their business license expire, in December, November?
Oh, no, I got it, it's a business, I'm
Yeah.
Everybody told the next meeting, see what the
Like, we're just waiting and waiting and waiting, like, I have a note here that I, my first thing, the first issue that we've had with them when, since I've been on the council, was September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, like, this is ridiculous.
It's been dealing with this for
Yeah.
Working way.
I know, I know.
Way long.
Like, this is ridiculous that we keep on, except, oh, we'll give them another month, another month, another month, and it's been since last November, like, it's been, um, deaths in the family, weather, you know, give excuses, excuses, excuses. When are we going to hold him accountable or hold them accountable? And I know this, this is sensitive because it affects where people live, but this also affects where people live. The town should be
True.
holding their feet to the fire to make sure they have a safe, clean place to live, and we just keep on
Not to defend them, but they're getting there.
Yeah, and I, I, I've been thinking about this, because long before, I think, any, well, maybe Dan, I don't know, a week before Dan. This has been ongoing, like that. Uh, and I, I have this thought, uh, and again, not, not, only, this is my thought. I think that the people in that park should have a, a, a communication from this council indicating that we continue to address issues in the park, they don't have to, we don't have to be explicit. Uh, the park is currently unlicensed and that's a great concern to us, we want these issues addressed. And that communication, I, I know that, I'm sure that the, all the residents can be pretty easily accessed through probably the assessors records, I'm not suggesting that Lynn has to do this or anything, but a couple letters
What, what is that to do?
No, no, I don't mean that, you know what I'm talking about, except maybe the couple letter, but, but here's the point.
Ken can write it.
Well, somebody writes it, but, anyway, my point is that the people in the park know, because you know we've had complaints.
Yes.
And now, and some of those people obviously don't care, but there are others, obviously, that
They're wondering, do they care?
Yeah, exactly.
Does anybody care?
No, we care, they're wondering if we care, do we don't care, do we even know?
So if we indicate, this is unfortunately been an ongoing issue, it's about legal counsel. I, I mean, I don't wanna open any doors, Jim may have some advice on this, but I, I, I still think that we are communicating with those people, because it's an ongoing press, we're trying to get it fixed. We have it on every month's agenda, those things could be said, and that we are attempting to get to a point where we can relicense or redo the license for the park.
Those roads are awful.
Well, yeah, we, I know. And I don't think
Those accepted town roads, if they're not
Right, I'm just saying
They wouldn't look like that.
Yeah.
No, I, anyway, there are people, and someone has said it, someone even around has said it. There are people for whom that is what they can afford, that's what they can afford.
It is affordable.
Uh, yeah, it is, and we, if only
We just made that ten percent, so we don't wanna lose anything.
Yeah, well, we're not
They're always going out, they'll still
I know, that's
You're gonna come? So you made, we made it come? There are a lot of towns that haven't been
There have been attempts repeatedly to make those facilities, you know, because
Should come, it lives there.
Yeah, I know, well, they're affordable.
They're affordable.
Yeah, they're, anyway, that's my thought, do you mind if I ask him if he has any thoughts on my
I think that's the appropriate question.
Is it, would you rather?
Appropriate question, I'm sorry.
No, well, just, if a letter could be sent to all, everybody, all the residents, indicating this is an ongoing issue, it remains on, I'm intended, you know, you know what I'm saying, in an attempt to correct outstanding violations.
Definitely, it's a letter, what would be the, what would be the, what would be some problems that could cover it?
Well, that's what I'm asking, you know.
Well, it's, it's just a letter that says there are ongoing attempts to try to get this corrected, I think it's absolutely true, and there's no part to that.
You, you know what I say, it's unlicensed, that would, no.
No.
Okay, it's all right.
And, you know, and, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody that wants to call me about legal strategy and the like, and I can explain that. If anyone has a question about it, I feel
I didn't mean to put you out, so
No, I'm not, I'm not singling this particular issue out, but sometimes the lawyer just has to shut his mouth because, uh, things can be said in terms of strategy that basically are left un, better left unsaid because strategy evolves in cases, and so, uh, that's what I feel.
I, I understand.
Going further than that would be, I think, something I would recommend, but what you say is absolutely benign.
That the council is attempting Attempting to resolve
Was it gonna stir the pot? We'll have some heat, we don't want that either.
Would you guys?
Well
I don't know.
What we should do is, he, he's saying in his email that with date of Friday, the polls have been delivered, and Ray uh, asked Randy McGovern and the building inspector to give us a report before the council meeting where they are. And then, no, no, see where they are, because we're only getting one side. And then, you know, I agree with her, I could say this has been going on since the eighties.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, well before two thousand.
And, and my only thought is that people there, I'd like them to know that we are attempting to resolve it, but but, but then
Yeah.
I, yeah, I know, there could be blowback and forth. I'm sorry.
Some of them may not have been able to finish it.
Well, but well, that's why we don't mention the whole niggas.
They don't, uh, they could, but they can start digging, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's what happy people do.
I don't wanna open, I don't
People dig.
I just had that thought, I should have probably discussed it.
Yeah, see if we can send a letter to Randy and Randy Ron and report that
That's fine.
Their status, what's going on, and that we can, uh, hold their feet to the fire.
Is there a letter to let it right now?
No.
Okay, you want a report from Randy and Ron? You want Bogosian and his plant, it's meeting September?
Yep.
September, because he, we gave him till the end of March?
September, we did, do or die.
Why don't we include pictures, photos of the new polls on site?
Can we ask Randy for weekly reports like we did for Hal when they were closing the scrapyard, the F and G salvage? Like, is there progress being made every week?
He was monthly, but
It was monthly, yeah.
For every two weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Every two weeks?
Every two weeks, if you could, yeah.
Randy, but Ron?
What does he have to inspect there?
Even those, like, the roads and stuff like that, you know.
Okay. Like, you want a general inspection report from him?
Well, they don't have a license right now, so
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So Randy's about these electrical issues and Ron's about
Everything.
Everything, this is whatever he, whatever he has jurisdiction
If he sees any, like, blatant violations, which
Okay, so we can leave that on for a little bit, this once again. Okay, item D, signage on major routes in the town, nothing filling in?
Well, applications completed except for, I'm gonna get the GIS coordinates for exactly where the signs gonna be posted.
Question on this, could we take signage on major routes in the town and put that in your monthly report? And wipe this right off of here?
Yeah.
Okay, do you need a motion for that, Lynn?
No.
So we can do that, and that could be in your monthly report, there's one last thing on the agenda.
No, more things, please.
A little bit, okay.
Just don't forget.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll get to the next one. Item B, resolution number two thousand twenty-three, dash zero one, resolution urging passage of state legislation regarding general assembly appropriations and rule of property tax for state-owned properties of the town of Exeter. We can strike that because we lost again. I think it was year seven. I don't remember.
Yeah, move it, we remove it.
Yeah, until next January.
But I do want to say thank you to you for pursuing that. We should all recognize that you're trying to do something. If you were a Democrat, you might make that a part of this.
It's true, actually.
I'm sorry, I, I just.
Second.
Sadly true. Sadly.
I'll fill you on something later than me and Bill have done and got mad at us, so. Okay. It involves the two guys in Philadelphia.
Oh, God. That's such an embarrassment.
Uh, F, Town of Exeter Code of Ordinances, Chapter fourteen, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article four, Impact Fees. Ken's been going back and forth with the consultant. We still don't have a complete answer of this, correct?
No, we need to sit down and have a work session to really talk about, because we walked to it within what you want to do, what you were requested to do.
Okay.
Should we extend that?
And this moratorium expired July first, two thousand twenty-three, because we did a six-month moratorium retroactive to January first, so I'm gonna make a motion to extend the moratorium for another six months.
Second.
All right, discussion. Why don't we have a work session? So we don't have to keep extending it so long?
Well, he, he was playing phone tag with the consultant for over a month, so.
Can we bring him in and have a meeting with him?
No, he's South Carolina.
All right, so we have, how do we, what do we do?
Well, we're gonna, well, that's what we're gonna do. It's, it's not him. He gave us the answer.
He gave you the answer.
But now the council has to discuss what the meaning of his answer is.
Why don't we skip to that work session, then?
Next Monday would be too early. She'll kill me. We already got two things.
When we can all make it. What about the Monday after? Twenty-four? We're gonna get it done. Let's get it done.
Did you have enough information to move forward? You want us, let's do a little special meeting next week and figure out when we can do a work session next week.
All right, we'll put on the. I don't understand.
What about, we put it on the, we put it on the agenda and I'll just summarize exactly what the issue was with it.
For next month.
And then, and then, first, it's like, it's gonna have to happen from there.
Okay.
All right, it gives you a month to get all paperwork ready.
What, a week? Next week or next month?
You want to do a summary and give it to us next week?
Yeah.
And then we can put it on the, the, okay.
What's, I'm not, we'll see it next week. What meeting is this?
We're doing a real quick one so he can.
Who's week?
We're gonna try and do a real quick one. I, I can't be on it tomorrow, because what he's gotta do is get a R S V P.
Okay.
That was it.
So I can't be on it tomorrow, you know that.
Okay, so.
Even me, I can I?
I'd like to be at the meeting.
We just need three.
Yeah.
He couldn't get it in in time for the agenda to get posted, so.
Believe me, I'm not offended anymore that there's meetings without.
That'll be under other administrative issues. We'll explain it, so.
As Matt and I was, like, in hospitals, it's scary.
I say, those were scheduled meetings, sir.
Okay. Anyway, so, all right, you'll get a summary.
I'll bring it in, but then we'll talk about a meeting.
But you just pointed to somebody in the audience.
Yeah, Rob.
Oh, you.
It was, it's just an R S V P for the, the one vehicle, or we're gonna end up with a year and a half.
Yeah.
Okay. And, okay, so we're gonna leave that on there for now. You give us a summary.
And then we'll schedule a meeting, okay?
You're gonna schedule a meeting next Monday when?
No.
Turn it on, yeah?
Yes.
No, but we won't do it that Monday.
They will have that meeting on Monday.
We'll get into it.
And then we'll have another meeting.
Yes.
He's gonna get it paid for. All right, so we'll leave that, that'll stay on there for now. The next one is Town Emails and Records, Official Staff, Boards, and Commissions. And that's the one where we still have people that's not committing that most tiny email address, something that we want to stack.
What are our options? We don't want to make it, we're gonna have to make an issue with these people who are serving the community that won't do something so simple? This doesn't make any sense.
No, I think it's a non-issue because when we were talking about this before, it was as long as the chair of the committee or.
The paper.
There was one person on, on their, um.
Line.
Yeah, sitting there, like, the head person, like, the land trust has whoever's in charge, I'm not sure, but as long, like, it doesn't have their name. It just says, like, Exeter Land Trust. As long as they are, somebody who's sending the email is on the chain, is all getting saved into the town's.
But didn't we, didn't, didn't we vote to require everyone on those boards to use these emails? That's what we voted.
I thought we voted just, like I just said, just the chair, but I'm not.
Thank you. I think you made a mistake. I think it was everyone.
You were, land trust, everybody on the land trust needs.
That's why James is trying to do all those people, like, give a motion.
So given the fact that we said that they need to do it, what do we need to do?
Is Katrina on? Katrina, you're not on this list. And neither is Pam Toro or, like, it's just the land trust.
Maybe it was just the board members, not someone who had issues.
Yeah. So the board members.
Well, then that also, I also, that was when, around the time, we also enabled or enacted the email policy. Is that true too?
What?
Okay, that would have been October.
Yeah, the, the email policy of how we use the emails and what's appropriate and what's not.
That's quite a few years old.
Yeah, but didn't some, we renewed it or something?
James, James added something and took something out about the, um, the retention, email retention policy.
Yeah, and we put something in there that said, usually your town email address. And my question is, there was a complaint that somebody had that one of, an elected official then sent an internal email out to a private citizen.
What if we just, like, looked the other way on this? That's not right because, is that right? Because now.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's, it's gonna unravel on, no, no, someone else, maybe Diane doesn't want to use in that email. What we're gonna do, we can't do anything to make her do it. We didn't let her, we didn't require anything else to do it. Don't, don't we have to do something? As, as much like, do we want to do something? Because these are all nice people. We have to do something.
What do we do with the zoning inspector who shares a private, internal email thread with a random member of the public after he drapes a citizen?
That's a separate issue, right? That doesn't sound right.
But it's not. It's an email issue. Like, do you, do I invite Joe Schmo down the road in on the emails that go around to the council?
Completely a professional on the surface, yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Like, it's, all has to do with email and what you do and what you don't do and what you require and what you don't require. And if it's not clear, this is what happens. So we can't enforce one part without enforcing the other part for having some kind of consequence.
This is the first part, right here. I know, I talked with Bill. I, I don't know Bill that well, but I've met with him a couple of times and he's, seems like an awful nice guy to me. He's basically donating his time for what he believes in. He just doesn't want to be on record, but he doesn't understand that if he's using his personal email and, and we can request it and he has to give it. So what's the difference? He doesn't, he likes it to be verbal or, or, I can understand that he's, 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 he's been around a little while. He's, he's, he's been doing this his whole adult life and he just doesn't get it. Doesn't, doesn't want to get on board.
And we just reappointed Gina and she's on this list. Not using our town.
Gina's read, oh, yeah, she, she hasn't sent any. Maybe she hasn't sent an email. She's, she's read ten emails. Maybe she hasn't sent a lot of emails. We'll have to ask her. She activated it. She just activated it. Some of them just activated it after we asked. One, two, three, four, five people just did it last month.
One here told me that, right, all of them.
So that worked on five people. We got a few left. One, two, three, four, five, seven people.
Well, we've given Split Rock how many years? Like, why are we gonna get tough on this?
A decade.
Yeah, why are we gonna get tough on this? Like, bring down the hammer on this when we're not.
Because only, we're not gonna bring down the hammer, but then, then what's the point of even having the rule? I don't want to use it either. I'm not using that email anymore. So what's the point? It unravels and we can't, we're moving backwards instead of forward with the, with the public transparency. It's a tough one.
But we're not only because when they're emailing any town email ad, I understand what you're saying and I totally agree that everybody, whatever we agreed on should have it. But this is not, they're, they're, every, all the information is being captured when they're emailing, like Diane keeps on emailing from her personal account instead of her town account.
You still doing that?
My accent.
My accent? Oh.
You know, it just, it, it happens.
Why don't we invite them into a council meeting? Is that appropriate? Will you talk to them? Yeah, someone's gonna talk to them.
Don't look at me. Definitely don't look at me, good.
Yeah, that's what I feel. Like, we've asked them. It's not like any information is gone missing or exploring out there in the ether and it's not being recorded because if Lynn emails somebody or Dixie emails somebody from the town email.
But what if it's a private, what if it's one person to one person here? It's, it's, it's not on the.
It is. If they, if somebody from the town.
What if Bill Haas, who has to set it up, emails Mike DeFrancesco, who had to set it up?
I'm not commenting on that person.
Well, you're not. All right, so Richard Booth, what if, Richard Booth and Haas, who talk to each other on it for some emails?
About town business?
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
He should be, like, there should be a zoning, he's the chair of the zoning board, so he should be.
That's not what we, but that's not, that's not what we, I'm not trying to debate you, but that's not what we asked, that's not the ordinance or the rule or the, whatever we made.
Can you find the, what exactly?
That motion?
Yeah. No.
Okay.
No, because I don't think it needs to be solved right this second.
So what's, you're gonna find the, the meeting minutes when it was enacted and then we're gonna.
Yeah, just see what exactly it says and.
Okay, okay.
I think it says everybody on the board. I bet a dollar on it. It says everyone on the board, on those, on the, on the main boards. I think you might have narrowed it down to that.
But I can't, like, I remember the back and forth.
We're in the library, remember?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll leave that. We'll go to the next item, which is historic preservation. What do you feel in all schools?
All schools. I discussed this with Sheila Reynolds, who's that chair of the Historical Association. She has not had back meet with the person who she recommends and talk about. Didn't work. We have a list of the projects we need to do. We can go up to bid, prepare the bid for that if you want. And we have the funds in the historic preservation account.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is not something you're gonna want to hear, but I think, this isn't Houston, but I think we may have a problem. And I'll tell you why. Uh, this should not, it, I didn't know, I mean, nobody knew. Well, some people thought. I don't think the town owns Woody Hill School.
I followed that. I followed that, Kelly.
Just a minute, there's been an update.
Ready goose.
I followed that. They got it in nineteen eighty-six.
Excellent.
It was sold.
Yes.
And then.
Was it returned with the town?
Sold to, transferred it to another body, and that was Houston, James Houston. And James Houston donated to the town in nineteen eighty-six.
So it was Houston.
Hey, wait a minute. I didn't know that.
Yeah, I just did it not too long ago.
Can you believe it? Right? I don't know. Well, the reason I just even raised it is because someone.
Me.
Said, I was in the town owns it because.
It was in the history book.
What?
The Town of Exeter History Book, it said that Woody Hill School was sold.
Yeah.
And I said to him, he and I had a conversation. It was like, it was sold.
When Wallowell School opened in nineteen fifty-two, the council at that time, or the following year, took it upon themselves to divest the town of those old buildings, like the one going up the hill to Exeter Hill.
Yeah.
Or whatever. And I think I know who probably bought it. People with mixed door and then apparently this one. And now it's been sold. Forget I even opened it, that I never.
Sorry, I haven't told you, but I.
Well, I want, what if you've not been able to tell me?
I'm supposed to tell you when you come out.
So you want to start working on?
You want to go up the bid?
Yeah, go ahead. All right, then, the next one is.
Wait, wait, are we going with bid? Motion to?
Oh, well, I'll prepare a priority list.
Oh, no, it's wait.
And then we'll go up the bid.
Yeah, there's a couple of major issues at Woody Hill.
Okay, the next one, resolution authorizing the creation of an emergency management hazardous mitigation advisory committee. Did we do that already or no? That was, was it pulled up?
We didn't do it, um, last month, but now it's ready to do.
So. Then we need a motion to create a resolution authorizing the creation of an emergency management hazard mitigation advisory committee?
So much.
Second.
Call in favor? All right, okay. Yeah, okay. The next one, Director of Public Works requests her guidance in five West Shore Drive. Patty, Jeanette, have done a lot of research. Jim is still working on a solution. Rob's out measuring stuff on Sunday, so we'll get more information. We'll get to that, so.
Do we know if we own that? Is that what, then we don't know that yet?
We're still working on that, so.
I don't know.
So that will stay till next month. Uh, which brings us to number eleven, reports of office of boards and committees, town council assistant report.
Point of information, just when you, we just voted on the mitigation, uh, hazardous mitigation, there, there was a resolution here. That's what we just adopted. Because wasn't there a question or two about it last month?
Last month, the GIS, it's not the order on the public director.
Was it quite ready?
But here it is. Well, that's, that's what I thought. I want to make sure that.
Okay, reports of offices, boards, and committees, town council assistant report.
Well, the only thing is, if you look in the emergency management director's report, she has asked me to help her with the RFP and MOU for the consultants to do the hazard mitigation updates with West French. I'm working on it, yeah.
Okay.
That's for what? At least she asked you to do steps for what? Consultants for what?
The hazard mitigation update with West, West French. So it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That was a grant. She was telling me about that.
Right, yeah.
That's, um, minimum, it's low. I gotta pay for it. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, solicitors report.
Uh, nothing new to the board other than a couple of items that are on the agenda for executive session.
Okay. Uh, reports removed from consent agenda. Mike, you had tax collector.
Oh, yes. So the tax collector, we'd like to tell the townspeople that the twenty twenty-three tax codes will be mailed today, June thirtieth, which was two Fridays ago. First quarter taxes are due September first with a grace period until September fifteenth. Taxpayers may pay on the bill upon receipt. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. There we go. Reports, we carry our reports, consent agenda. Other administrative issues. Next week, Monday, the 17th, at 6:30, we need to do a real quick council meeting. Rob has, is it two RS, RFPs?
I mean, it really could be up to four if there's other departments that need to get some new knowledge.
With what was happening the last week, we were getting tied up. He could not get these done in time before the agenda was posted.
Is it a holiday?
We hold off on the one, which is a vehicle. We might not get it for another year and a half if we wait another month. So it's just... What's that? No problem. So, yeah, yeah. So that's what we just need for, three people, 6:30, Monday night, so. What's that? And I'm not adding what you're about to tell me.
Well, there are two items. Three, oh, three items.
Yeah, so, real quick. Five minutes.
No, it's okay. I don't plan to be anywhere if I can help.
If you're at the hospital, we'll be there.
So stay there.
Yeah, on the 4th of June, I said, I can't be admitted. I have a lot of things to...
Well, now the town's party is a company, it's a town.
That's okay.
So, do we need to vote on that meeting? No. No, okay, so, alright. Communications. Cowboys, you had number 20.
I did. And I, and I removed this because I understand that there, but there are other earlier ones.
Hang on, pardon me. Number 12, other administrative issues. I did have something for number 12 if you...
I'm going to...
Living at number two. Living at number two, well, 16, California.
Yeah, I'm talking about number 12, other administrative issues.
Yeah, I write them down as the people speak. Cowboys first, I am the second.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's number, that's number, that's number 13, right? I'm talking about number 12, other administrative issues. I have something that I think...
Oh, I'm sorry. So you need to go back to other administrative issues and over there?
Please.
Okay.
And that'll be skipped over. I didn't listen, I don't, I don't know. I didn't hear it. Sorry. So we got a letter from, Dory sent us a letter on Friday, last Friday, and it talks about FEMA and they're gonna, I believe it's for the fire. And we've had other towns that helped. And the town of Exeter has to pay 100% and then we'll get reimbursed 75% by FEMA.
That's not true.
It's not true?
No.
Okay.
You need to look into that stuff on every floor.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that have to be clarified.
That's what I'm asking. Is that what I'm skipping?
We don't have to pay, we don't have to pay upfront. FEMA will...
Okay.
We have to submit bills and FEMA will pay 75% of that.
So you're saying that she may, you have misinformation there?
It's not correct. I worked with FEMA and...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Back to communications, cow number 20. You right there, Mike? That was you.
Well, I know, I know it was. I didn't know if you wanted to say it in my order, but that's alright. Uh, so this was a communication we got from Paul Moore and it has to do with the dog treats. And I didn't know about this, but I did hear some conversation about why something like this was put into place. I don't know the whole story. And you've read Mr. Moore's concern. And so I was, I was only gonna suggest, now Paul's here. I was only gonna suggest that maybe there could be a conversation between Paul and maybe Rob or whatever, what, what prompted this.
Excuse me, Paul Moore, right here. I can address that appropriate.
Yes, but Paul, do you know what, were you, were you the reason that this policy?
I wasn't the reason. The reason was, one of the small pleasures of country life is to go to the transfer station with your dog and have the dog be all excited.
Paul, excuse me, that was not my question.
What was it?
My question was, are you the reason that this policy was put into place? I don't think you are.
I want my dog to get a treat.
Paul, that's what I'm asking, okay? If someone can help explain, not necessarily, I thought there could be a conversation between...
Can I just interrupt this dialogue and ask Rob? Because we didn't hear about this. Must be coming from Rob. Did you know anything about this, Rob?
Yes, it is.
Could we, could we know this more?
Yeah, if you would. It's part of a bigger problem that I'm having, had the transfer station with the employees. I've got reports of one of our employees teasing a dog out of a window. And I, uh, it's not the first...
Tell the customer to roll the window down a little bit. It's like teasing.
Well, when he bites somebody...
That's true, yeah.
And then the town gets sued. And that's, uh, that's the first thing. In some of the complaints that we had within executive session about employees there, there's also reports of how one person or two of them, whatever, they hand out certain treats to certain people because all they care about, and this is all quotes, like, I mean, this is, people have brought that to me. Uh, it's all about their Christmas bonuses that they get. Um, they will only help certain people.
Gifts from customers.
Gifts, and I've given both of the employees our policy on receiving gifts. We have a policy. They're up to date with that.
Where's the policy?
Uh, you can only get, uh, you can only get like $25 and, you know...
On one person?
Right.
On one person?
Right, but it can't exceed $75.
Two months only?
Per the year. From what I understand, uh, the name of that policy...
The core of ethics policy.
I'm sorry, the ethics policy. So more comes into it. And not only that, is repeatedly with the rodent problems that I've been having at that place. I've told the staff, do not keep open containers with food in that little tiny building. We have blue bug, big blue bug bills there every month. And they get more and more expensive. And they do not comply with putting a lid on the dog treats. But the last straw to me was them teasing a resident's dog. And that got back to me by the resident, okay? So that's where I draw the line. And that is my decision. And I'm not changing my mind on that. And I'm very, listen, I'm an animal owner. I have two dogs that are my family, okay? I give them a puppy at my home. I know what all about it. I buy the bones at mom's pos. I'm a big pushover when it comes to my dogs. It's a bigger thing than the animals that are visiting the transfer station. My heart is in the big, in the little town too. Just so you know, my heart is in this little town. And so, and I love everything about this little town. And it's not anything to do with any particular animal or resident for that matter. It's about a liability that we could have a dog bite someone and lawsuits and things like that. And so that's my decision. Unless the council tells me to do different, I'm sticking with it.
I have a solution for you. People bring their dogs into this building and they get treats.
Into the building?
Yes.
Quite frankly, do you go to the transfer station? If there's nothing else, I would invite you to ask your constituents about this issue. Because one problem, one problem...
I just mean four problems.
Can I speak? You have your chance. How about one problem?
Please, Paul, that's not fair.
Well, one problem is going to, to take away this cute little privilege for the whole town.
I'm sorry. It, he, he said it isn't just one, Paul. I, I read your impassioned letter.
It's for the dogs, Carl.
My, my intention tonight, Paul, was to bring this up so that I could understand because I heard there were some issues that affected our public works director that he was trying to resolve. That's why I pulled it off. I did not expect you now to become confrontational with a public work director.
I think it's great to argue about dog treats at the town council meeting to begin with.
It's an, it's an interesting issue that people are concerned with. And if it's as simple as having someone, you know, put a, a container in there that, that the rats can't get into, right? Let the person, don't bring your dog to the transfer station. The guys are very sweet about coming over. The dogs, yeah, I, I can't perceive that one of those guys is gonna come over to a car where the dogs are, you know, indicating that they're not happy to get a treat.
Sorry that you feel that way, but it happened. I was supported by another resident.
Right, well, it's out there. Now, it's just kind of a silly little thing. I apologize for taking your time. But, you know, it is one of those small community things. We don't have to have rules for everything in our lives. Think about it. Ask your people.
But that's why I also said, come here on Wednesday if you go to the transfer station because dogs come in here. I've witnessed it. I know people here give out dog treats. And I, my first gut reaction is, isn't that a liability to the town? What if a dog in here bites somebody, knocks somebody over, et cetera, et cetera?
I appreciate that, but again...
I understand what you're...
Transfer station is a little bit different.
I understand.
Now, you basically roll out of bed, collect your garbage, the dog gets excited and you go to the transfer station. And it's kind of a sweet thing. It's, come on. Feel bad for the dogs.
Thank you.
Is it, thank you, is it? Anything we can, can we, can we, I, I pulled this too. And I hear what you're saying.
Really?
And I know you can, I know you're doing a great job and I work hard and this is not... But I think that, can we just make an exception to give the dogs their treats? I mean, we give, the UPS guy comes to my house, he gives treats to my dog. I mean, everybody, well, these people who give treats, the dogs love them.
That's what I'm giving them.
Well, I mean, everybody could get bit anywhere, anytime. We gotta regulate everything? We gotta regulate dog treats now?
What is on town property?
You've got to be kidding me.
A liability for the town, when it's private, when it's town municipality-owned property in buildings.
It's different than private.
It's a beautiful small town.
Jim, do you think that this is a liability issue for the town?
Or is this a liability issue?
It's always a liability.
Well, I'm a lawyer. This is a dog biscuit issue. In front of the town council, it's got everybody all worked up. We have a town director who is in charge of the facility. He's made the decision, quite frankly, I thought this is the question for your lawyer as to whether or not could there be an issue?
Sure.
If a dog attacks someone and someone thinks that the dog should have been here, we get sued.
Okay, this is, this is, so should, should there be a policy that no dog is on town property?
That's a policy question, not a legal question.
Gee, I hope not. That would be horrible, that's...
Well, when the car is parked in...
Oh, I, I think the dog's not supposed to get out of the vehicles.
Ooh, tea, honestly? This is a dog biscuit issue.
Yeah, but I just wanted, because I read...
The others we should we discuss?
I'm ready to leave.
I'm sorry, don't leave. I brought this up, not for the reason that I expected it to go the way it did. I was curious. But all I wanna say is, when, when it's just been said, we don't have to have a policy on everything, there was no policy on this until the director brought to his attention that there was an issue. Am I right?
Yes.
So it wasn't like you're out there creating policies because you want it a bit.
Right.
You're addressing something that you saw as an issue. And I think that's to your credit. So I just wanted to say that. And I don't think it's about creating regulations about everything except when the person we put in charge sees a need. And so that's my comment, and I won't say anything else. Jim, I'm sorry, I read, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Every time we have one more regulation, it's one more rule, it's one more law, law. Every single time someone adds a law or a rule or an order, they just say it's one more and I'm done. I'm coming on this.
Okay. Are we done with that communication though? Number 21 was Diane.
Totally non-hysterical.
Are you sure?
I just, uh, like the people at the Tomahawk, I know this, she wrote this stuff. And she had sent us that they are having a, um, Veterans Memorial Cemetery, they're doing dedication and stuff. And it's Wednesday, July 12th, which is this week, at 5:30. And I just wanted everyone to know that and if they wanted to go.
Do you think you might, I thought, do you think you might?
Oh, I probably do.
Okay, Olivia had number two.
And this... This is a noise complaint, number two. And I know there's nothing really that we can do about that. And I'm sure you've heard it last month. This is Dear Brooke, but, um...
Yeah, I think she was died down.
Okay, I was going to say, like, I know we don't have anybody to enforce, but I was thinking, Spokes the sergeant, the constable, like, if we just park him out there in a car or something...
Talk to like three or four people there. And what it was, it was peasants land, Stanford's land. I believe they're down in Hendrix is now, they might even be done. They were in there, all the damaged pine trees that were in the fire still had a marketable value.
Yeah.
Where the bugs got to them, they were in there logging. And the one lady screaming at me, I moved here because it's rural. Like, man, this is a rural economy.
Yeah.
And she actually went out and stood in the road and tried to block them.
Oh, no.
Because then someone else calls me. She blocked two, the third guy drove around her, he said. She's at the top of the hill on there, road blocking traffic. And then we had complaints about the military vehicles. So that, when I went up there, they were there for four days, widening the road on Earl Adams land. It was a road they built last year for Weekfest.
Mm-hmm.
It was a one lane. Now it's like a superhighway. Now you have another beautiful fire road in between Glen Rock and Gardner that's split up. The two NCOs were happy that they had a place to train these kids.
My only question about that is, remember a couple of months ago when the National Guard came to, um, ask if they could, or the hunting...
That was on a town road, though. This is private land that they were working on.
So they don't need to ask permission?
No, they were on private, they had, we went up there, they had a road grader, a dozer, they had water truck compacting back roads.
No need to go on...
And the National Guard?
And they were, they said they do not get the places to give these young people the hands-on training.
Well, and I thought, it only made me think of the other place because they wouldn't go on that land unless the council wrote the letter or whatever. Like, National Guard wouldn't go and, wouldn't work in town unless the...
This is part of the Weekfest too, is what it is. So we already give them that.
But we gave them permission to have the Weekfest on Saturday and/or the rain date Sunday, so...
I believe they were there, they were on the road four days. They were probably up there two or three weeks on the property itself and stuff.
And then what else?
That was an interesting week. Oh, we got two, yeah.
And 12 was just the letter from Frankie Gregorio about the, um, the town hall, the new town hall. And that's, you know, we're treated here. I thought that might be discussed a little bit more, but...
And then 16, or what, or this is Dame?
Yes.
So you have a note here from Carrie. She's working, looking at that and wanting to respond to it?
Yes, Carrie is working on for Jennifer Dame. For the low to moderate income housing, for it to be adjusted. And we think it's a state issue, but the, um, tax assessor is working on it. So it's not being...
Uh, that's it. Do you want to take a brief recess before we go to executive session?
Yes.
Okay, most particularly five minute recess. Second, all favor, five.
Diane, do you know that the National Guard now is up to ask that, if that comes up?
I think they were there at the same time people were.
Well, they're, they're more now than they're, because the 861st Engineering is, is doing.
Yeah, this, this is Fogarty over here.
Right. So they're, they're going by my house a lot more now than they were before.
They probably had, probably 25, some young kids up there working too.
It's good, it's a good trend you've been.
Why? How why?
I was just, I was just. Oh, I, I mean, I can't. Does he know what I was gonna suggest, that that just happened, that we reach back out of the old?
I apologize.
Being advanced of the town, so.